...this morning to introduce this session and to introduce Eric Fritsch, who is our chair. I will just say at the beginning of all this that this is the second forum town hall meeting[16.66][16.66]intended for faculty. The one yesterday afternoon in the Gateway Center for me was highly informative. I would like to think that you have 22, 23 around the committee table, meeting every other week to discuss this matter and carve out so-called gun-free zones on this campus. And you think that you have representation, which we do, and that you have a lot of ideas. But the ideas that came forth in the meeting yesterday afternoon were sometimes very inspired and always very illuminating. And I think that I can speak to the committee that we're learning a lot from our constituents, and I hope that continues this morning. So, Eric.
Thank you. Good morning. I don't need this, but I'll hand it to you. Thank you. As Jess said, I'm Eric Fritsch. I'm a chair of the Campus Carry Task Force here on campus. I'm also professor and chair of the Department of Criminal Justice. Been here for, this is my 19th year. And so what we're going to do today is kind of introduce you to-
What our role is and what we're doing. We'll do a PowerPoint presentation. It'll take 15 to 20 minutes. It's just really designed to give you some information, so we're all talking about a consistent baseline. So what are the campus carry law requirements? So what are we required to do by law here at UNT? The law specifically focuses on concealed handgun license holders. So we'll talk about what the requirements are briefly to get a CHL. What kind of data do we- CHL holders? And then also what the estimated impact is on UNT. And then we're just really opening it up for questions and comments from y'all in the audience and taking your feedback, because we have a 23-member task force, and it has representation like Jess. So we have faculty senate represented, we have staff senate represented, we have two members of the Student Government Association, and we have a member of the Graduate Student Council. We have myself, and then we have Finley Graves on the academic side along with Jess. And then we have a host of department administrators that are impacted by campus carry. So we have UNTPD on the committee, we have risk management on the committee, we have housing on the committee, Dean of Students, Student Affairs, Office of General Counsel, University Relations, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. So it is a wide representation. We were appointed by the president to serve on this committee. So it's a wide representation of the campus community. But we really thought that that was insufficient to draft such a sometimes controversial but also critical policy. And so we've gone through what we refer to as a consultative process, and we're holding these town hall meetings to not only provide information, but to definitely, most importantly, to get information from you and to understand your concerns and what you would like to see within the policy, but also to help us then draft that policy. We have not, I've said it in every session, this is now the seventh town hall, we have not sat around the table, the 23 of us, and defined anything about this policy. We have spent our time and effort, we've had three meetings so far, we meet every other Friday, we have spent our time in those three meetings talking about developing the website, which we have, campuscarry.unt.edu, and developing the frequently asked questions that are on there, et cetera, and then planning for these town hall meetings, developing the PowerPoint, et cetera. So we don't have the answers. We're waiting to hear from you. This is the last town hall meeting, but we also have a web form that people have filled out. We also have an email address. People have sent us comments. We're going to take all that into account as we draft this policy. And just as far as timeline goes, which is covered somewhat in the PowerPoint presentation, is we are drafting the policy in consultation with Office of General Counsel. It'll be presented to President Smotris in the middle of December. That is the timeline that he has set for us. He will then review it and make any changes at his discretion to it. It then goes to the Board of Regents in February of 2016. They will then review it, amend it. Any amendments they make are final. They are the final decision makers on this policy, as required by law, which we'll cover. And then from February 2016 to the law taking effect, which is August 1, 2016, we will then start our educational and training process with faculty, staff, and students to make sure everyone understands the campus carry policy, what its requirements are, what its limitations are, et cetera. And so that's kind of why we're starting now, because although the law doesn't affect, come into effect until August 1, 2016, we've got a lot to do in this amount of time. So let me get on to the presentation. But we do have, I know you bet Jess, we have Kelly Reese from URCM is here, we have Ed Reynolds from UNTPD, any other members of the task force present? Okay, I'm here. So here's kind of the overview of what we're going to do. Kind of already mentioned it, but we've introduced the people in the task force that are here. But going to basically make sure that we've covered the requirements of what the campus carry law says and how it applies to UNT. Since it applies directly to CHL holders, we'll lay out kind of the thumbnail sketch of the eligibility requirements to be a CHL holder. We will talk about data that we have on CHL holders, and then, so what do we know about them? And then we'll also talk about the estimated impact at UNT, and then I'll open it up. So, campus carry requirements. So what does the law tell us? Well, first thing, just a couple of comments before we get into that, into it specifically, is that the legislature has taken on the issue of campus carry for, in several legislative sessions. It just so happened that it passed this legislative session, and the governor signed it into law, and it takes effect August 1 of 2016. We have had concealed handgun licenses in this state since 1997. At that time, institutions of higher education have been excluded from places in which CHL holders can carry. But this law allows for what we just referred to as campus carry. So it allows CHL holders to then carry on campus a concealed handgun, which is that third bullet point there. So that's really the purpose of the law and why we refer to it as campus carry, is that it's really just removed that exclusion from the law. So CHL holders, who have been in existence in this state since 1997, will now be able to carry their handguns onto campus. Again, I underline it, and I can't say it enough, that sometimes redundancy is a good thing in critical points, but it's August 1, 2016. It doesn't exist right now. It does not take effect until August 1, 2016. There's also a, sometimes a lack of differentiation between what's called campus carry and open carry. Campus carry applies to us at UNT. CHL holders being able to carry on campus a concealed handgun. We will not have open carry. Open carry does take effect in Texas, January 1, 2016. It was passed by the last, in the last legislative session. Open carry allows concealed handgun license holders to expose their firearms, so their handgun, so they can carry it in a holster, just like a police officer does. So that's open carry. You may see that at Proger and other places. Come January 1, 2016, you will not see it on campus, because institutions of higher education are specifically excluded from open carry. So that's off the table. Campus carry is what we're focused on and what we're tasked with doing. And I put it in bold, UNT is going to abide by the requirements of the law. That is the charge that we have from President Smotris, is to draft a policy that goes to him in the middle of December that meets the intent of the law, also taking into account and balancing the need to maintain a safe environment at UNT. And so we're going to abide by the law. Basically, what that's saying is, is that we are going to allow, and there's like a wasp flying up there, so if anybody starts to scream, that's probably why. But there, but we will have handguns, we will have concealed handgun license holders carrying handguns on this campus on August 1, 2016. There's been some people who say we should ban it, we should fight it, we should, we should. That's not going to happen. So, what are the requirements of the law? Again, nothing wrong with redundancy sometimes, because the first bullet point is redundant, but basically campus carry allows concealed handgun license holders to carry their handgun on campus in a concealed manner. It also allows us, as Jess referred to, gun-free zones. It allows us, UNT, and any other state institution to carve out what we are referring to as gun-free zones. That's not what the law calls them. It's just that way we can have a common language and understand what we're talking about, is that we have the ability within the policy to strategically identify gun-free zones. So those are areas on campus in which concealed handgun license holders cannot carry their handgun, cannot carry their handgun. And we're allowed to identify them. We have to be strategic about it. We have to have justification for it. And when the presentation's done and we get your feedback, we would love to hear your ideas on where gun-free zones should be. We are recording all of these. We are then transcribing them and taking notes, so we have a list. This is the seventh of them, but we're adding to the list of the areas that we should consider. We are allowed to do that, but, there's always a but on the bottom, on the bottom slide. We can't have the restrictions, the gun-free zones, so odd that nullifies the intent of the law. All right? So we have to be strategic, and they have to be limited. So the example that I use is classrooms. We can't say we don't allow guns in classrooms, because that nullifies the intent of the law. And that, although the law says, we can carve them out, the law also says you can't be so broad that you nullify the intent of the law. Because if we said all classrooms, students with CHLs can't go to class, faculty with CHLs can't go to class, so it nullifies the intent of the law. And so we have to be strategic. We're keeping a list. We're going to, and again, we have made the decision. We have had meetings about building a website and preparing for these town halls, and that's it. Once we have everybody's feedback, we'll develop the criteria and start to work through the process of establishing what are going to be the gun-free zones on this, on this campus. Middle point I didn't cover, we must give effective notice. So there's the effective notice. You probably have seen it on some businesses, some bars or whatever. It basically says you, although you're a CHL holder, you can't bring your gun on here. So if we have a building that we have determined to be a gun-free zone, then there will be effective notice. If there's an area of a building that we've determined to be a gun-free zone, we have to provide effective notice. So these signs will be going up prior to August 1, 2016. I put on there, such as collegiate sporting events. And the reason why I put it in there is because it's not allowed right now. So the CHL law has been in existence since 1997, but since then, institutions of higher education has been one of the exceptions, right? You can't carry on campus. That's changing. Well, one of the other exceptions to that rule is collegiate sporting events. So CHL holders cannot carry today and in the future at collegiate sporting events. And so that's why I put it in there. So that's not a decision the committee has made, that just comes from the law, so I just put it as an example, because it's not allowed. CHL holders are not allowed to carry their weapons at collegiate sporting events. So after consulting, so we've talked about the consultative process, we've had town hall meetings, we have a web form at campuscarry.unt.edu. The people can share their thoughts. We're getting all of those. Those are being distributed, will be distributed to all 23 members of the task force. We have a campuscarry@unt.edu web email address that we're gathering emails from. Again, that will all be provided to the entire membership of the task force. And after that point in time, then we will start to draft the policy that I've already said a few times. We'll go to President Smotris in the middle of December. We also have the ability by law, because that's what we're talking about, is what does the law require, also have the ability by law to specifically carve out rules for residence halls. And we have a subcommittee of the task force that's looking at that. Risk, excuse me, risk management's on it, UNTPD's on it, housing's on it, dean of students on it, student's affair, you know, all the major players regarding residence halls are on it. And they're going to see what kind of policy we need specifically addressing residence halls, because that is specifically allowed within the policy. And again, redundancy, it's bolded, but this law does not take effect until August 1, 2016. That's when guns will be allowed on this campus, with CHL holders being able to carry onto campus. We did effective notice, that's effective notice, we'll skip through that. Just some process things. The first one I've already covered is we're sending this to the Board of Regents. That's required by the law. Goes to the Board of Regents, February 2016. It's already slotted to be on their agenda. They will review it. They can make any amendments they want, and any amendments they make are final. And so that's when we'll have the final policy, and then we'll have time from then until August 1, 2016, to go into the training, education mode with all of our campus community and with students that are coming in through orientation, et cetera. We obviously have to publish and distribute it to everyone. We have to put it on our website. And then, beginning September 1, 2016, and then every two years, we have to provide the policy to the state legislature and basically identify our gun-free zones and give justification for why those gun-free zones were selected. And so that's just part of the process that we will have to go through as campus carry becomes effective. Just some additional information. So this isn't related to the law, but we thought as a committee, it was good for people that came to the town halls to kind of get this information as well. First thing is, is UNT, we cannot revoke the right of a CHL holder to bring their gun onto campus. The only entity in this state that has that right is Texas Department of Public Safety. They run CHL. They own that process. They own the suspension and revocation process for that. So we don't have the ability. So if there is a student, for example, that is having, you know, a mental health crisis, and we are intervening in that from a care team standpoint, we cannot dictate to that student who's a CHL holder, they can't bring their weapon onto campus. It's not allowed, all right? DPS takes care of all that. So we don't have that right. And I think that's important for us to know. Also, once the law becomes effective, we're still going to have a couple of criminal law violations related to CHL holders, and that is if they display the firearm, because this is concealed handgun, so it's not supposed to be in plain view or brandished. So if it is plain view, brandished, et cetera, it is against the law, will be so, and UNTPD can take action. Or if the CHL holder enters one of these gun-free zones. And so that will be against the law as well. We kind of already covered open carry versus campus carry, so I really won't cover it again, just to say, open carry won't exist on this campus. Institutions of higher education are specifically excluded, so that is off the table, and we will not have to deal with open carry, just campus carry. And the last point also regards some of our legal authority. UNT does not have the legal authority to require a CHL holder to self-identify. The only entity that is required, that a CHL holder is required to self-identify to is a certified peace officer. So UNTPD can ask, and they have to respond, but we do not have the legal authority to require a CHL holder to self-identify. So that's kind of the requirements of the law. Now let's talk about, kind of a little bit about what it takes to get a CHL, because that's who this applies to, and I think it's important. And this is really just the thumbnail sketch of it. It's actually a very complicated process, and so we could probably spend two hours on the CHL requirement process. So what I'm giving you is just a quick thumbnail sketch, but really the point I'm trying to make with these few slides is that, one, there's a process in place to get a CHL. It's a fairly complicated process to get a concealed handgun license permit in this state. And CHL holders are exceedingly law-abiding citizens, because they are required to be so to, one, get the license, and they're required to be so to maintain the license. And so that's kind of the point of what I'm trying to demonstrate in these next few slides. But again, this isn't all the requirements. This is just some of the eligibility requirements. But you got to be 21 first. You got to go through a process of training, written exam, proficiency exam regarding discharging the firearm. All of that, classroom and proficiency examination must be done by a certified, by DPS instructor. And then, besides just being 21, basically, you pretty much have to be a noncriminal is what this is conveying to us. Never convicted of a felony, not convicted of a Class A or B misdemeanor in the last five years, not charged with an A or B misdemeanor at the time or under felony indictment, not a fugitive from justice, et cetera, et cetera. If you know the kind of the categorizations of our criminal activity in this state, the only thing below any of that is a Class C misdemeanor, and that's a citation only, punishable by a fine of $500. All right? That's a Class C misdemeanor. It's at the very bottom. So being above, it basically excludes the person from getting a CHL, or if they were to have a CHL, get arrested for driving while intoxicated and charged with it, then they're going to lose their license. Their license is going to be suspended and revoked by the Texas Department of Public Safety. That gets kind of smaller, but smaller font, but we're in a smaller room, so I think people can see it. But not a chemically dependent person, capable of exercising sound judgment regarding the proper use and storage of a handgun, which is covered in the training, no material misrepresentation on the application process. And then the Texas Department of Public Safety does a background investigation on the individual. And then I put on there, for additional eligibility, ineligible factors, visit, and I don't even know why I did that, because that's like really, really long URL. Basically, what I do is I go into Google, and I put Texas Department of Public Safety, concealed handgun license, and poof, there's the website. It's got all this information about what the eligibility, ineligible factors are. It also has information about the conviction stuff that we're about to go over, et cetera. It's all on that one, all on that one location. What do we know about CHL holders? They represent about 3% of Texas residents, so roughly 3% of Texas residents have a CHL. They have a tendency to be over the age of 30. 80% of them are 30 years or older. About 2/3 of them are 40 years or older, so we know some information about their age. I think that the concern that we have heard, and have heard before we started the town hall meetings, were really regarding violence and criminal activity that was going to occur, because handguns were going to be on campus. And so we looked at the conviction rates. This is all on DPS website. 2013 is the latest available, when I built this PowerPoint slide three weeks ago. It's not uncommon. I'm a criminal justice professor. We usually run two years behind on data. It's just the way that the system works on published data. So 2014 will be there at some point in time, but basically what this is saying is this, DPS tracks all criminal convictions in the state. So for, of all the criminal convictions in the state of Texas, in 2013, there were about 51,000 of them for all offenses. Of those 51,158 people were CHL holders. So it gets to kind of what I said regarding the eligibility requirement. CHL holders are exceedingly law-abiding citizens. I mean, the conviction data that we have from the state points that out. People's biggest concern, I think, from what we've heard, really is about violence. And then we get into active shooter discussions and things like that. And so we pulled out the violent crime data. So if you're shooting in a criminal justice class, and we start talking about violent crime, usually what we use is the Uniform Crime Report definition used by the FBI. And we talk about four offenses. There are more than four violent crimes. But usually we talk about murder, we talk about sexual assault, we talk about robbery, and we talk about aggravated assault. And those are our four violent crimes that are captured in what's called a violent crime index. So those are all there. And then terroristic threat is all there as well. And that looked awesome yesterday. I don't know what happened to the PowerPoint, but it was all in line and everything. So something magical happened. It's looked awesome six times. It was all in line, it was supposed to be. But what this shows is this. This is now focusing on violent crime, which I think is people's greatest concerns about what's going to transpire on campus, is we're going to have CHL holders with guns, is there going to be a spike in violence. And so, again, the takeaway from this is very unlikely for a CHL holder to commit a violent offense. So of all the violent crimes, convictions in the state of Texas in 2013, that middle column, although not perfectly aligned, amounts to 13,746 offenses. Okay? So there were 13,746 total convictions for violent crimes in the state of Texas in 2013. How many of those convictions were CHL holders? 31. 31. So 31 CHL holders were convicted of a violent crime in 2013. It's about 0.225% of the population. And so my message is, in doing these presentations, is that they're very unlikely to commit a violent crime. I mean, that's what the data shows us from Texas. What do we expect to happen at UNT? Well, we don't have the requirement for people to self-identify, so we don't know how many we're going to have, but we've got about 42,000 students and employees. So about 37,000 students, about 5,000 employees, about 42,000. Applying that 13, applying that 3% rule, we would estimate 1,260 CHL holders would be on campus at UNT. And that includes faculty, staff, and students all together. And so 1,260 is our estimate. We are taking a specific look at residence halls. As I said, we have a subcommittee that's looking at that. We, really, the takeaway from this is we don't expect there to be many students in residence halls that are going to be concealed handgun license holders. Why? Because most of our students that live in residence halls are under the age of 21, so they're not even initially eligible for a CHL. And that's what that first part's saying. We've got 6,210 students living in our residence halls, but only about 500 of them are over the age of 21. They still have to meet all the other eligibility requirements. We also know from the prior slide, 86% of CHL holders are over the age of 30, so we don't expect there to be very many. We can talk when it's, you know, open discussion, question, comments, time about what other states are doing, what other states have done, I should say. Texas, this is new to us. There's other states that have already done this. We can talk about how other states have handled this, and we have a subcommittee that's looking at how we're going to handle our residence halls specifically. We also looked back, we asked UNTPD to look back at their records, because as I said, we've had CHLs since 1997. So have we ever had an event in which a CHL holder's brought their weapon onto campus and then been arrested, et cetera? And there's been no cases of that since 1997. So we took a look at that as well. Really, the last part of this on the estimated impact is, we're not alone. We're not the first one to invent campus carry. We are now the eighth state that has it. The one with the longest history is Colorado, so we looked specifically at Colorado. Most of the other states have enacted campus carry since 2011 or since then. So they're newer at this, just like us. So we looked at Colorado, and since they have the longest history, to see what's happened at their large state universities. We've got two major large state universities in Colorado, Colorado State University and the large CU campus, so CU at Boulder. And at Colorado State Universities, they've had no incidents since 2003, so a 12-year history of a CHL holder, campus carry, CHL holder displaying or discharging a firearm on campus. And then Colorado Boulder had one. It was an accidental discharge of a employee at the dental school. She was showing her firearm, her handgun, to a colleague, and it accidentally discharged. She was fired. And so we have a 12-year history, two large state universities. Colorado State's got over 30,000 students. They're a little bit small enough, but still, it's a large state university. And there's been one event in the state that's had the longest history with campus carry. Last thing before I kind of open it up for questions and comments, is that we want this process to be as transparent as possible. I mean, that's why we're here today. We don't want to be a 23-member task force that sits in a room and creates some policy that doesn't have input from anyone. So we've created these town hall meetings. We've created the website, created avenues for people to share their thoughts. And so by you being here tells me that you're interested in this topic, and so you can continue to stay informed at campuscarry.unt.edu. In other words, it doesn't end today. Your participation, we will- Your participation, we will provide updates onto the UNT website so that people can keep track of the events that are occurring with the committee. We're under, as you probably know, we're under a very tight timeline. December 15th is when it's going to the president, so a lot's going to transpire between now and then. And we'll keep people informed through the website. Also, if you have additional thoughts that you don't get to share today, or that, you know, come to you at a later time, this isn't the end either. We have a Share Your Thoughts web form on the website. So, there's a little hot button that says Share Your Thoughts. You can fill it out. That information is captured, and then, we're going to provide all that information to the 23-member task force for review. And then, we have an awesome email address, campuscarry@unt.edu. You can email us comments as well, and we will take those into consideration. So, thank you for listening to me. I ran through a lot, but I wanted to make sure that we got that part of the information out. Now, it's your, your turn. We are videotaping this, being livestreamed, and then, it's being recorded so that it can be viewed later by anybody that wants to, but also the task force members that are not here, so they can keep apprised of the situation. So, we're going to have microphone wranglers around, so we were going to have to speak into a microphone when we have questions. I'll do the best to answer them, but we have Chief Reynolds back there. He may be best to, they'll be looking at you. Yeah, you're back there. Chief Reynolds back there, he may be in the best position to answer some questions. No, you're looking at him, but I'm fixing to call you out too. We have Elizabeth Whip back there from Student Affairs. She may be in the best position to answer questions, so we may bring them up, and they may answer questions as well. But, the floor is yours. Thank you for listening to me.
I'm Steve Ferdy from the Department of Political Science. Is this working?
It is.
Probably like most faculty members around the state, I was opposed to this law when it was being agitated, and I still think it may be a bad idea. But then, of course, we can all imagine scenarios where it would actually work out very well. And the scenario I'm thinking of is, I have in my class, a limited number of trained shooters strategically placed around the room in case anything happens. So, then I thought, oh, okay, let's essentially do something to, in a way, deputize these CHL carriers, which I will be one by next fall. But then, you say, we can't have them identify themselves. So, to me, that sort of negates the rosy scenario in a large degree. I can't count on them actually being in class on a given day. I won't know where they are.
Don't know who they are.
So, can I ask people, whoever wants, to voluntarily meet me in my office out of class time to put together a strategic plan of where you all will be? I mean, in other words, to make this work? See, in the legislature, the argument for this was a kind of common good. The campus will be safe. Which means, the CHL people are not just saving their own skins, they're helping all of us. But, if we don't know who they are, and they never have to come to class in a particular time or sit in a particular place, it sounds like, really, it's only about them saving their skin. And how can we make this work for the safety of the campus? Which, to my way of thinking, was the only real justification for having this thing. But, you know, how can we, how can we do that somehow within the structures of the law?
It's, it's a good point. You're, you're correct in the, in the, in the fact that we cannot require them to self-identify. So, we won't know who they are. The question was asked yesterday of, well, can I ask? Or is that against the law? That's not against the law. So, there's, there's nothing wrong unless we put it into policy. You know, it goes into policy where you're not allowed to ask a student. But, it's not against the law for you to ask students if they are a CHL holder. They just don't have to respond to you unless, unless you're, you look like this. You're in, you got the gun and the badge on. Then, then they're required to self-identify. And so, so that is the challenge, is nothing, nothing. And we've had students, faculty, and staff all self-identify in the forums. You somewhat did, because you said, "I'm going to be a CHL holder." So, some people will be willing to do that. And if they're willing to do that and engage you in that dialogue of, you know, you're a CHL holder, you're going to be in my class, et cetera, there's nothing that prohibits that engagement from occurring. But, we can't make them self-identify. And so, I think then, from what I'm hearing, the challenge for the committee or the task that we have is, is then, how do we carve out a path to make this process and the ability of people to carry on campus most beneficial for UNT? Because we have heard from campus carry holders who have self-identified in student meetings saying, basically, "I don't care about you, I carry one to protect myself." And so, how do we make it most beneficial to UNT, which is what I'm hearing you say?
Is there any way that you can sort of have them assume some responsibility? Or is it all just their rights and zero responsibility?
I think by law, it's, it would be their rights and zero responsibility under the law. I think that perhaps something can be put in place at UNT where there is encouragement for there to be more involvement on their part to provide identification to their professors, if, if they are so inclined. But, from a legal standpoint, it's, it's really all about their, their rights and not, not ours, so to speak. Ours being, you know, nonCHL holders.
Thanks. I understand that there is no real debate here, that we are accepting this policy and that UNT is going to be abiding by it. But, I can't in good conscience not sit here and say that I think it is a deplorable state of affairs that we are sitting here discussing this, that we are talking about deputizing students. And it's, it's just disgusting to me. But, a practical question is, if we can't ask students to self-identify, how are we expected to know whether or not gun-free zones are really being observed? And whether or not the students that are having, carrying guns are actually CHL holders?
We won't know. I mean, you know, there, there are a few locations that, that, you know, and, and my job here is to tell you the truth. I'm not blowing smoke anywhere. We won't know. I mean, there is no way to know. It is expected to be concealed, and you are expected by law to be anonymous, because you're not required to self-identify. So, there is no practical way to know. So, there are in limited events, high-risk events where we use metal detectors and wanding, then we would know. But, if it's just this building, whatever that building happens to be, is a gun-free zone, we're not anticipating putting up metal detectors, making it look like the courthouse to get in and out of it. And so, we won't know. But, if we do know, so if, if, again, it's against the law for CHL holders to enter a gun-free zone, it's also against the law for them to display their weapon. If we do know that, then UNTPD can certainly step in. And, and I just, I want to clarify by something, because I think the, the term was used, but, but I don't think we're advocating deputizing students. I think what we're talking about is leveraging the ability of students who are trained with firearms to assist in the protection of our campus community. We don't, we're not, we're not going to deputize people. I'm looking at you, yeah. We're not, we're not doing that. So, that, I mean, I know we use that word, but I think really, the concept is, is there a way to leverage, you know, their ability to assist in campus, campus safety? And, and that was brought up in a prior forum with a faculty member that was out at Discovery Park and was talking about response times out to Discovery Park and talking about, I don't recall the stats, but the vast majority of active shooter situations occur within less than five minutes. So, they, in other words, are done by the time the police do show up. Because a five-minute response time is, I'm a policing researcher, five-minute response time is a pretty darn good response time to an emergency. You don't get that from most police agencies. And so, so that was really the issue, is, is that can we leverage their ability to assist protection? But, we're not deputizing them. But, I'll stop, because I know that the microphone is going to say something else.
Yeah, no, I mean, as much as I hate it, I, I would, I guess, propose that there be metal detectors outside of gun-free zones, because I would personally like to know whether or not someone is coming into that area that shouldn't be there, that shouldn't have those weapons in there. And I, I do understand that we weren't formally talking about deputizing people, but we are in fact encouraging this. And I think that CHL is accepted on Oregon's campuses, where we did actually have that recent active shooter situation, and that didn't seem to really help all that much. And I don't know that there is any proof that that is actually a benefit. Perhaps you have some studies that show otherwise.
There are, I'm just addressing the Oregon situation, because I've been asked, not really in the forums, but in interviews that I've done regarding Oregon. Oregon is a campus carry state, but, but the term campus carry means different things in different states. What some states allow is for universities to opt out. And so, we allow that in this state, if you're a private university. We don't have the option at UNT, but TCU, SMU, et cetera, they have the option, they can just opt out. Well, in Oregon, they are an opt-out state. And the community college in which the active shooter occurred was, had opted out. So, they did not allow campus carry on that campus. And I'm not saying that that would have made a difference. I'm just saying, they, they are a campus carry state, but that particular university, that particular community college, did not allow concealed handgun license holders to carry on their campus. Chief's up.
Just some point of clarification on the concealed handgun permit. So, the license holders that go through the process to get their concealed handgun license, and you kind of think of about it as football, offense versus defense, they're trained in the defense of their person with the concealed handgun law. They're not trained in the actively engaging someone like police are that's an immediate threat that's going on right then. So, I think even in most situations where you might have a concealed handgun holder, unless that person is threatening the individual that has the license at the time, I think in most situations, they're not going to get involved. They're going to follow the same rules that we do in our training, which is, get out if you can, and then take out, or hide out, and then the last deal is take out if you have to engage. So, just some point and clarification. I'm not trying to minimize a CHL holder's training, because I think it's, it's beneficial, but it's certainly not what police go through, so.
Yeah, and I, I would, well, one, I would agree with that, because the chief said it, so I have to. But, no, no, I would agree with that, because I've talked to, you know, CHL holders go through minimal training. And again, my area of research is policing, and I do a lot of work with city police agencies. And I've known a lot of people who are SWAT commanders, et cetera, and they train every week on those engagement techniques to be on the offense rather than the defense. And, and when, as it's been explained to me, when shots are fired, you know, your adrenaline goes up, your body shuts down, and really, they're working off of muscle memory. And their large muscles are working as they are engaging that situation. CHL holders aren't trained like that. I mean, they're probably, I know the idea that you have, but bouncing off the way you said, they're not trained to do that. They're trained to do that, and it takes an awful lot of training, whether that's military training or police training, to be able to be in an environment in which shots are being fired, and you're on the offensive rather than, "I'm getting out of here." And, and it's, it's very true. I mean, we, we, we probably don't have the expectations of the CHL holders to engage that person, because we really don't know how they're going to react in that situation. Reality is, small amount of training to carry that handgun, their body's going to shut down in that particular situation, and they may not have the ability, because they haven't been trained extensively like the police are, to engage that individual.
Hi, my name's Jen Bailey. I'm actually at TA over in geography. And you had a lot of great stats in your presentation about, you know, CHL holders and their very minimal contribution to violent crimes. And as a person who teaches undergrad and is in sort of an intimate setting with about 20, 25 students, where they, you know, sometimes get mad at each other, things like that, it is not my, the CHL holders, who are lawful CHL holders, honestly, that's, that's not my concern. My concern is the few rogues or, you know, whoever, who we will not be able to stop and question if we notice that they, you know, that they look like they're concealing a handgun. And so, I have a couple of questions regarding that. Does that, does that, does my concern make sense?
So, but, your, your concern is about nonCHL holders?
Yes, my concern is about nonCHL holders being able to conceal a handgun and the faculty in the classroom not being able to legally ask for identification. Because you raised some very good points. You know, the ones who've gone through the training are not likely to cause those violent crimes. But, in the few instances, you know, well, the many instances, what we've all experienced in the past couple of years, the, the worrisome individuals that are on campuses are, many of their handguns or guns that they have acquired have not been acquired legally. And so, I have two questions relating to that. One is, I know we can't legally ask them, "Show me your CHL." But, what is our ability to detain a student, to wait for law enforcement to come and question them? That's my one. And then, two, I guess I would really like to bring up the, the question about checkpoints again, and really, how plausible those are, because that would make me feel a lot safer if there were just some places that there were some checkpoints, you know, and that there were enforceable safety zones. Thank you.
Okay. Do you want to address the first question?
Sure. So, in regards to, if you have someone in your area that you have a concern of, because you think there could be violence, and I would tell you, never confront that person. Step out, call us, let us go in and talk to that person. Because that's, there's a number of issues that could occur, being that. And you mentioned the people that may be carrying weapons that don't have a license. Well, they're here today. We, we deal with that every day on a ongoing basis. So, what we're talking about is just the handgun license holders. Now, do we pull, do the police department, do we have a lot of incidents with guns? No, we actually have very few on campus. And the incidents that we do have are nonCHL holders. So, but every year, I mean, we have instances where we're dealing with somebody that has a gun on campus, and they can't legally be here with a gun. Those people won't be able to legally carry those guns after this law passes, because they're the ones that know they're not supposed to have a gun, and they choose to do it anyway. Does that make sense?
Yeah, and that, and that, that's kind of what I wanted to, when I was listening to your intro, I just wanted to make the clarification. The self-identification requirement applies to CHL holders specifically. The people that are carrying on campus without a CHL, they're criminals. They're law violators. And the law on self-identification doesn't even apply to them, because it only applies to the CHL holders. And certainly, chief knows, knows more than me, but, I mean, I will concur. As a faculty member, I'm not engaging anyone that I believe has a weapon on them. I'm, I'm calling the trusted UNTPD, and they can come and handle the situation.
But, can we legally keep someone in a room if we're waiting for law enforcement?
Well, that's, that's a really not easy question to answer. And I would tell you that if you think that someone has a weapon and they're danger, that was absolutely the wrong way to handle that. There are some provisions in the state law that allow for citizen's arrest for felonies and things like that, but that, that's a bad idea all the way around. You know, on any given day, you know, we have a number of police officers working here that are really close to just call us. And, and it's been brought up in a couple of meetings about, if I have someone I'm concerned with, or I feel like there's an issue, that there may be an upcoming issue, that's where you get us involved early. We have a care team. I'll sit on the care team if I don't want our folks sit on that. And we assess all the information that's out there and make a determination on, and there's times we put a plainclothes officer in a classroom. We've done that before. Or we put a plainclothes officer outside of an office because a faculty member is concerned that there may be an issue. We don't do it every day, we don't do it every week. But, if we believe there's a threat, we're going to do that. The other issue is the signs that say, "Don't carry a handgun on there," into this particular area. The people we're talking about that are carrying handguns illegally, they don't- area, the people we're talking about that are carrying handguns illegally, they don't care about those signs. They don't care if there's video, they don't, they're in some psychotic state and, you know, that issue is just not going to apply to them, so.
Right.
I just had a, are we talking?
It's working.
I just had a question. If there is a CHL holder and they have, they're carrying, right, and they cross campus and they go to a place where it's prohibited, is there going to be a check station of some kind or is there going to, do you just not take it around with you or?
Well, part of our job is to advertise where those locations are when the policy's created and to make them aware of where they can store their weapons if they need to. So it may be in their car, which is what's occurring now, because CHL holders have been able to carry in our parking lots since 1997, since this law was passed. So it's not like we don't have CHL holders every day with guns in our parking lots or walking across campus and just can't carry it in a building.
I see.
So, they're acutely aware of storing guns and where they can and where they can't. But if we have an area, say, the Child Development Lab that says, you know, "Can't carry a handgun," those locations are going to be advertised on our, through website or through show of the means so they'll know that. But no, we're not going to have lockers at every location that says, you know, "Here's where you store your gun." They'll just need to take it back to their car or leave it at home or something.
And are the campus police going to change their operating procedures on August 16th?
I think we're all going to change our procedures come August 16, 2016, in, in a couple different regards.
Okay, thank you.
I'm a lecturer in the School of Journalism and I have lengthy comments that I put into the, into the website yesterday, but I, I have a couple, I have an observation that I think is valid, first of all, I think this is just a totally ludicrous law and I'm really irritated that this university and other universities didn't do more to fight it. But, that said, it's a fait accompli, there's not a lot we're going to be able to do. I'm relieved to hear that students can voluntarily let us know that they have their CHL because I have, like, a classroom contract that I have students sign that they have read the academic integrity agreement and understand the consequences of cheating. And I would like to know that I can put as a voluntary question under that, "Are you a CHL holder?" Because all my students are upper level and graduate. So, I'm, I'm relieved to know that we can voluntarily ask them to give out that information. That said, you know, I agree with you, I've always said, "There's probably an illegal gun on this campus right now, somewhere." I know CHL holders are very law-abiding citizens. I'm not worried about the CHL holders. With all due respect to the police department, our instructions to get out or lock the door won't work in any classroom I teach in. I don't know about the rest of you who are faculty, but in the six years I've been here, I've never taught in a classroom with a door that locks on the inside. They all require a key to be locked from the outside. So assuming I have a key, I have to go out in the hall and lock the door, and I don't have keys to any of those rooms, exposing myself and everybody in that room to the knowledge that there are people in that room. Give us doors that lock on the inside. That's not your responsibility, but I think the task force can make that recommendation to facilities management. I realize there's a cost incurred. A human life is worth a lot more than a lot of door locks. Second, many of us cannot get a decent cell signal anywhere on this campus. And I have been griping about it since I teach social media and frequently we need to do classroom exercises and we can't get through the blanket Wi-Fi. I have been, I've never been told why, I've been told it's the, it's the blanket Wi-Fi, I've been told it's my cell carrier, which I doubt, I've been told it's my phone, which I doubt. I realize many of our buildings are built like bunkers. Let's get some cell signal boosting technology on this campus so that while we're laying in that locked room, that by the way, has a glass window in the door, we can at least call somebody and tell us where to find the bodies. Because nobody with a CHL has the proficiency to take out a shooter in a surprise situation that's in their bag, it's in their backpack. If you've ever flown with a law enforcement officer carrying their weapon, you know, they are introduced to the air marshal before the flight. It's so they each know who's supposed to have a gun. But the air marshals, like SWAT teams and all that, are highly trained in practice containing a shooter within the confines of an aircraft cabin. Some of our classrooms aren't much bigger than that. So, I'm, I'm concerned about the current situation between now and then. And I realize that the last time a mass shooting occurred on a college campus in Texas was in 1967 when Charles Whitman climbed the tower at UT. But, give us doors that lock on the inside, cover up the windows, and let us make a cellphone call. Thank you.
Very good points, thank you.
Yeah, I have a couple of questions. The first one is, do you have an idea how this policy will be applied to administrative offices? And the second question is, are you coordinating with other state institutions at all? Because everybody's going to have to have the same policies.
Right, right. So, to the first, are you talking about administrative offices like on campus regarding President's Matros, et cetera?
Well, and departmental offices, college.
Okay, because some have asked about the, like, the, some have asked about the system offices, you know, which are located in Dallas. So, so I just want to make sure it was clear. There's been no, no decisions made about gun-free zones and there's really been no offering within any of these town hall meetings that administrative offices should be a gun-free zone. So Provost's Office, President's Office, et cetera, you know?
Or Dean's.
Or the Dean's Offices. We, we have not heard that. If, if there's a recommendation that that should be considered, it, it goes on the list. We're keeping a master list of, of, of potential areas we need to consider and we have not heard, we have not heard, sorry, it went out for a second. We have not heard anybody asking for those. But if you want that added, we can certainly add that to the list, but we have, again, we as a group haven't sat around and said, "This is where it needs to happen, this is where it does need to happen." So, we have not done that. And the second question was?
Other institutions.
Oh yeah, thank you. Because I'm sorry, but I can only, my head holds one question at a time, I have something wrong with my head. So, and it's not just today, it's just a universal problem with me. So, we definitely, with our sister institutions, absolutely, because there is a system-level Campus Carry Committee that some of us sit on, all three of us right here, myself, Elizabeth With and, and Chief Reynolds, and then people from UNT Dallas and UNT Health Science Center, and then people at the system level. So there's a coordination there, but we are also keeping apprised of the events on, on other large, I would just say, other large state campuses. So what Texas is doing, what Texas A&amp;M is doing, what Texas Tech's doing, University of Houston, trying to keep an eye on what they are doing as well.
Why not TWU since they're right across town?
Haven't thought about it. I know that they have a committee and I know that, that it's being run by their police chief, but certainly we can reach out to them. I mean, I just haven't, I haven't really thought about it. But, any, really what, what that is designed to do is to try to identify areas that they're considering and, and best practices that they may have identified we need to consider. So, we can definitely reach out to TWU easily and talk to them and see what they're doing.
Thank you.
Yes?
Okay. Hello?
You're working.
So I wanted to go to her point over here and his point over here. So, the little that I know is someone who wants to create mayhem will go to the area that is marked, "No CHL, no handguns in this area," okay? And he said that those signs, you know, they're disregarded by criminals.
Okay, yes.
So, I can imagine you have the Child Care Center with that sign, and so that person, that person wants to create mayhem, it goes to that area. So that's why her point about those areas may have, because that would be one level of the curfew, this person is going to disregard that sign anyway.
Right, right. There, there, I'll say a couple of things. There's, there has been information provided in the, in the town hall meetings from some of the people that have been in the room that have made the point that gun-free zones serve as an attractant to active shooters. I don't know, I, I, I don't have any validation of that. I don't know that that is an accurate statement. What is an accurate statement is what the chief said, which is, anybody that is, is intent on death and destruction is not going to be deterred by a sign. And the example that I've used as, because people have asked me in other meetings of, "Do gun-free zones deter offenders, criminals?" And I've said, "No." And here's the best example. Every shooting that has occurred on a K-12 campus is a gun-free zone by federal law. And so, all of those events are, they're gun-free, but they didn't deter those individuals. Regarding the metal detectors, you know, we, we can explore that. It really depends on the magnitude of the, the gun-free zones. Because then, to me, and of course, I'm not the one with the checkbook, but then it becomes a resource issue. It's a, we have to, we have to build them and then we have to staff them and we have to have the resources to be able to do that. Now, one thing regarding Child Development Lab that may make it a little bit more amenable to that, that we heard from Darlene Callahan who runs Space Management, is, the Child Development Lab, I don't know when, but is moving out of Matthews Hall and it's going to be in a self, in Green Village. So it's going to be in a separate building. And then that may make it more amenable for metal detectors or something than it, I know it's in Matthews Hall, I've just never, I've been in Matthews Hall, I've just never been to its physical location in Matthews Hall. And so, it's something that we've heard and we need to consider. I, I think the limitation is, is, is the resources it requires to be able to do that. But, we do do that. We do, at high-risk events, we, the chief has said at other sessions, we do winding and do metal detectors. And so maybe we expand that to some of the particularly sensitive gun-free zones that we identify.
I have one other quick question on that. And I know that, and I know it's not a done deal yet, but the consideration of selling alcohol at some of the restaurants in the Union, would that be considered? Or I'd like to, you know, have you look at that as a consideration for a gun-free zone? And, and then just, because this is the last time I'll take the mic, I do want to thank all of you for doing this. Committee work is a necessary evil in our life. And, some committees are a pleasure and some are not. And I just want to thank all of you for taking the thoughtful consideration that you are in all of this and for giving your time, because I know this is going to be an extremely time-consuming effort for you and just, I think we all thank you for that.
Thank you.
I just wanted to ask a question about, or just say something about the classroom thing you said. The, so there's 3% of people who are CHL holders and 97% are not, but their rights are more important, it seems, in this conversation than those 97%. And I just wonder if anybody's thinking of it that way.
Well, I think that's the way the legislature thought of it, is the 3% are more, more, their rights, when you look at the scale of weighting it, their rights to bear arms under the Second Amendment are more highly weighted over the other side of the argument. Because certainly, we, UNT, argued against it, maybe not as passionately as we should have in SGA, et cetera, but, you know, I don't, I don't think there's any way to, to say from a legislation standpoint that that's exactly the way that the legislature felt, is, is that it focused on the 3% and their rights and not the other 97%.
So we seem like we're just, there is no way to push back on that? Like, we're just saying, okay, just, we don't think that makes sense, but we're not going to push back on it at all?
We, you know, we are, or at least the charge from the president to us, he sat with us at our first meeting, was to craft a policy that meets the intent of the law. We're actively working with Officer General Counsel because they're the official sayers of the law on this campus and the interpretation of it, et cetera. But at the same time, making sure that, that, that our campus is, is safe. And I, I believe it is safe, but, you know, that's my, my personal opinion and not the viewpoints of the other 22 members of the, of the task force. And so, we as a committee are not, are not pushing back. You know, last, last session, last town hall meeting we had, there was actually a legislator in the room that came to hear our conversation. And he came up to me afterwards and, and basically, you know, said that, you know, "We're going to have this effect, take effect August 1, 2016, we're going to be back in session in 2017," so a few months thereafter, and that he expects there to be, you know, for there to be an additional assessment of the law. That didn't mean, he said, that the law is going away, he just said that, you know, there may be, there may be changes, there may be modifications, there may be bills that are proposed to make changes and modifications to the law, so he expects it to be an issue in 2017. And so when, when any of that, when we have our governmental relations people, when any of those bills come along that UNT thinks they should support that maybe limit this law, I'm sure they'll do so. But from a, right now to August 1 of 2016, we're not doing any pushback. There is no pushback to, to be had because the law is going into effect. So there's no way to push back with the legislature until they go into session next time. And again, you know, I'm, I'm a lowly professor in chair, so I, I don't make those decisions about how we interact with the legislative session when it goes in, with the legislatures when they go into session next time. So I don't know if there will be, you know, a push by university presidents to revamp the law or re-modify the law or do any of that.
Eric, can I make a comment about the last session? Do you mind, just real quick? So, there's been several folks that have said that folks didn't do enough to combat this law. I don't know from a, the, from a chancellor and a president's perspective, that's a completely different ballgame and it's a very political ballgame. And so, but if you look to all the associations across the state of Texas, I know that the Student Affairs Association, the State Association, the National Association, as well as the Vice Presidents Association, all sent letters, all testified, all tried to argue against the passing. I know IACLEA did it, the, the national law enforcement, there's not a law enforcement agency across the country that said, "We want this law to pass." Student governments across the state and across, anywhere across the country have spoken out against it. So I, there were efforts, there were many efforts in my opinion. It was part of a conversation that I had with all of my colleagues for over two years and with students for over two years. This legislative session and the legislative session before that, and actually the one before that. So it was three legislative sessions that we went through before it was finally passed. So, I mean, we can speak to, was there enough done, was there not enough done, all we want to, but Eric's right, I mean, we're, we're there. And so having to, I, I guess what I want you to hear is that there were folks that tried and it failed, just like any other law. And so we are subject to the law and it's not in our best interest, especially as a public institution, to say we're not going to abide by the law, whether we agree with it or not. In the same way that we roll model for our students all the time with policy, you may not agree with the policy, but we abide by the policy. And if it's not working, then we work to change it. And 2017 will be our argument, our next opportunity to change it. But until then, we've got to make the best of the situations we possibly can for our community. And that's why these town halls are so important, so that you all can tell us the nuances and differences about our campus community and where we should have gun-free zones or argue to have gun-free zones, or what makes sense for UNT. Because what's going to happen at UT and UTA and Texas Tech and Houston are going to be be different from what we do here. Some things will be the same, but by and large, there'll be different nuances to our campus. And that's what we're going to make sure we're hearing from all of you, that we do the best we can with what we've got to work with.
So a classroom's definitely off the table?
Based upon everything that we've heard, it does not meet the spirit of the law.
I would say yes. That was brought up yesterday. It's been brought up in other sessions. You know, in the end, we're supposed to meet the intent of the law. I would make the argument, just me, that if you say all classrooms, you're not meeting the intent of the law because CHL holders, your students can't go to class, CHL holders, your faculty, who will be you, can't go. But they can't, but they can't, but they can't carry their gun, which is the intent of the law. The intent of the law is not for them to go to school. The intent of the law is for them to be able to carry their weapon on campus. So I would make that argument. On the list, it's not me, I don't think, but it's on the list, you know, of topics to consider. But some of those have to have Officer General Counsel input. In other words, they need to look at it and say, the viewpoint of the committee that this is too broad, I'm sure too broad. Yes?
My name's Meredith Clark. I'm an assistant professor in the Mayborn School of Journalism and teach in the same classrooms that Professor Buffkins does. My question is about faculty offices, and forgive me if this has been brought up earlier, but in one of the earlier town hall meetings, the question was asked and the statement was that faculty offices were not going to be able to be gun-free zones. And I have questions about adding that to the recommendations when state legislators have written in the bill that the legislature is a gun-free zone. So their offices are gun-free zones and ours are not.
It's, it's my, it's, yes, it's on the list, but it's also, it's my understanding, and again, I haven't read the laws that applies to the Capitol. The gentleman that seemed to be extraordinarily knowledgeable about the Capitol grounds, and had actually talked to the Capitol Police Chief that day to verify the information, that basically the entire Capitol is a, there are no gun-free zones, except for, I think he said, the mezzanine on the third floor on occasion. But the floor of the legislature, all their offices, everything on the entire Capitol grounds are concealed handgun license holders can go anywhere. That's what I heard from someone.
Yeah, I begged to differ after reading the bill.
That's second-hand information. So the question about offices, I would kind of reiterate what I had already said from my interpretation. Again, this is just me as one voice on the committee, is that that's too overbroad because now faculty who are CHL holders, one just left, he's going to be a CHL holder, we're taking away his right, and that doesn't fit with the intent of the law, to just say you can't carry office. And keeps our students who are CHL holders from coming to see us in our office. Now, one unique thing that we heard at last, yesterday's afternoon's town hall with the faculty, of having some kind of gun-free location for those highly sensitive, potentially volatile conversations we have to have with students. Kind of like we do when we have, you know, bullpen offices where it's open and we have several faculty in there, and then we have like a confidentiality room where we can go and have a confidential conversation. Well, somebody made the recommendation that consider having locations on campus that are basically not full-time occupied offices, but offices that are gun-free zones, so that when they, so that when they have to have that conversation with a student, they can then request that room and have that conversation in room, knowing that effective notice has been given, et cetera, to the person that they can't have a weapon inside there. But as far as offices overall, I think, again, it's just too, it's going to be overbroad. It's too general. And it doesn't meet the intent of the law. The intent of the law is straightforward. Concealed handgun license holders can carry their weapons on campus, and that's the intent of it. And if we put any restrictions on that are seen as being too overbroad or taking away that right, then it's not going to pass. It may not pass through President Smotresk, not pass through the Board of Regents, may not pass through legal muster, et cetera.
I'm sorry, is it too overbroad to put as part of our recommendations or our suggestions that faculty members have the option to request that their offices be gun-free zones?
That question was brought up and it's added to the list of things to consider. You know, my comment yesterday was, I think it's likely to be too overbroad. And the reason is this, it depends on the magnitude of it. I mean, if we start giving faculty, I don't know how many faculty we've got, but let's say 1,500 faculty, the opportunity to make their offices gun-free zones, if 1,200 of them take us up on that option, then that's too overbroad. Or me as department chair says, my hallway is a gun-free zone. I think that's going to be considered too broad. But again, we are working in conjunction, and we have two members from the Officer General Counsel on our task force assigned to our committee here. And we're working with the system folks as well, and Officer General Counsel, because they have to provide us that input on their interpretation of what's too broad. I'm just, you kind of, my perspective of the way that I see it.
And I was just going to comment on the carrying of weapons on campus. The CHL only applies to the handgun that's concealed. It doesn't apply to like long rifles and shotguns. You may remember, there was quite a bit of news coverage in Dallas on certain gun riot activists that were standing on corners with M4s on, and they were causing concern at different locations and stuff like that. I think that's what happened in the legislative office. Someone walked in one of the legislatures and they had assault-type rifles on, and there was some change in that. I may be wrong, but I think that that's what that was. But it doesn't apply to the concealed handgun piece of it.
Okay.
And you can't carry a rifle. You can't carry an assault rifle, you can't carry a shotgun.
And I admit, I have not read it. I don't know, I'm just relaying what I heard from the other person.
I had a quick question about when you have, let's say, organizations or some type of activity or gathering that's associated with, you know, some organization on campus. What are, what are organizations, and this, I know this is a faculty meeting, but it's just kind of a broad question about what are our abilities to apply for and maybe talk to the UNT PD about establishing a temporary gun-free zone around something like, I don't know, the homecoming parade or like, you know, religious organizations and things like that?
Excellent question. All of them have been excellent. I just don't want to just point out her on excellent. Everybody's like, well, mine wasn't good. All of them were good. But no, we've asked that actual specific question to the Officer General Counsel to add that to the template policy. We want two things, because we think the policy needs to be dynamic and not just stagnant. We want the ability to have a process, a procedure, on campus in which new places can be identified as gun-free zones and places can be taken off the list. So, for example, Matthews Hall, when Child Development Lab moves out, there's probably not a need then for that to be a gun-free zone. We need a process to be able to do that. As new buildings go up, we need to be able to perhaps add a building or a portion of a building to the list. We can't just have a stagnant policy that does, these are the 13 places and that's it. So we've asked that. The second thing, which is specific to your question, is we've also asked for the policy to have a procedure in place with the hundreds of events that we have on this campus, that there's a process you can go through in which that location will be deemed a gun-free zone. So perhaps this location, because of what's going on Thursday from 2:00 to 4:00, you go through an application process and it's a temporary gun-free zone, signs are posted, people are notified. I think we have to have that. And I'm hoping the Officer General Counsel agrees with that and integrates that into the template of the policy that we're going to put into place. Yes?
Just kind of as a suggestion, I know that it hasn't been finalized yet, which areas are going to be gun-free zones and things like that. Talked about metal detectors. I have, coming from a security background, I can tell you that a metal detector itself, the beep, isn't going to stop somebody with a weapon. They're just going to come through. Metal detectors are only affecting if you have an armed officer there to enforce the gun-free zone. So that being said, going to the concern about locks, perhaps with specific gun-free zones, what you can have is maybe a key card entry or something like that, for example, the Child Development Center, so that only those who are authorized to get in can easily access the area. It makes it a little bit harder for somebody with a weapon who tends to do harm to get in there. And, I mean, metal detectors are great for making people feel secure, but again, like I said, without an armed officer there to enforce it, it doesn't really help.
Good suggestion. So card readers at some locations, you know, wouldn't, it wouldn't function for a general purpose building, but perhaps something that has a very narrow focus and function, like the Child Development Lab, good card readers out there and employees have access, et cetera.
Yes.
Parents have to be buzzed in or whatever.
It's not going to stop somebody who's truly determined, but it'll at least slow them down.
Right, right, right. Thank you. This is always the lull in the class where, you know, like, it's over with, they've given up. My students I'm referring to, not y'all. Yeah, true. That's true. Okay, well, just a couple of points before we depart. First, thank you for coming. We really, really value your input. You know, I'll say it because I want it on camera again. You know, somebody yesterday intimated that this was perhaps a bunch of posturing on our part. It's not, it's not from my viewpoint at all. And as I said then, I've got better uses of my time, tend to stand up for two hours, seven times, plus all the other time we're putting into this for posturing that something's already been done. It hasn't been done. All, you know, we got a lot of work to do, because all we've accomplished is a website and these forums. And so now we've got to work on the policy. And so thank you for being here and for your comments. They are all taken into consideration. Second thing is, is that, again, I don't want it to just end here as you walk off. If you have additional thoughts, and we have the web form on our website, we have campuscarry@unt.edu. Email, you can send us your thoughts. Also, we're, we want this, as I said at the beginning, to be as transparent as possible. So we will post updates onto the website so people can keep track of what we're doing between now and when we send the draft policy off to President Smotresk December 15. Thank you for your time. Enjoy the rest of your Thursday. Thank you.